Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise and join with Councilwoman Mills in salute to our flag and country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our prayer, please.
Creator God, thank you for all you have made. We rejoice in your beautiful creation. Thank you for the ability to appreciate it and enjoy it. In the Bible, you say, "A leader of good judgment gives stability, but one who is greedy for bribes tears it down." You also say, "Let him who boasts boast about this, that he understands and knows me, that I am the Lord who exercises kindness, justice, and righteousness on earth; for in these I delight." Help us to delight at justice since you delight in justice. Guide us to live seeking fairness for businesses to prosper and families to flourish, and justice in the courts of law that will lead to stability and a thriving community. Lord, thank you for our mayor, the city council, and leaders at every level in our city. Give them grace to bring truth, justice, and stability to our city. Give them power to do what is right and to rule in fairness. And may our community always prosper from the influence of good men and women. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Frank. Call to order, our City of Guthrie City Council meeting, February 25th. Originally scheduled for February 18th, but postponed one week because of the weather. Agenda has not changed. Item number two on our agenda is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. We have none. Item three is consent agenda items A through H.
Your Honor, in the interest of parsimony and a quick agenda, I would ask for unanimous consent to waive reading of the consent agenda and move approval of consent agenda items A through H.
You're here.
So moved. So moved.
We have a motion and a second, and that includes, I think, the word parsimony. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, I do have a question.
Okay.
Concerning the item D, proving declaring police department evidence and found property surplus has been processed through the following state statute and allow deputy clerk of police departments to dispose of property.
I will take the answer to the question.
So my question was concerning
Oh, it's D.
The handguns, the weapons that that's going to be turned back into police use. There's, what, thirty-three there? I think I counted thirty-three. A lot of them are just small, like one of them's a Derringer, very small. So I just wonder how, I'm just curious how that's turned back over for police use.
Yes, I did visit with Chief Swager about this. He couldn't be here this evening. So I don't have a great answer for you, but I do have an answer that everything that you have in your packet to date is what had to go before the court. So at this point, we're going to take those weapons, use them for police use. At a future date, we may come back and say, hey, this isn't necessary for what we're doing at the police department. And we may need to declare it surplus to be sold at auction or whatever in the future. But for now, we didn't want to limit ourselves. We thought, okay, maybe we can use it for police use and then go from there.
A Derringer?
The order is extensive, Councilman Botha.
I understand.
Any other questions or comments?
Sir, I'll hold.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Submit your votes, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval of consent agenda items A through H. Item number four, items removed from a consent agenda, there were none. Item number five, special use permits for property located at 201 North 13th Street. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, this is a request to amend an existing special use permit for a bed and breakfast. It's located at 201 North 13th Street. It's been named, or the name of it is, the Judge's Chambers. They currently have an allowance for five units. They want to increase that to seven. All of the units would be in the existing home. Again, there's currently five. The other two would be within the existing home. In February of twenty-three, February 7th, 2023, the council did approve with some conditions. One of them, of course, was a limitation on the rooms. Meals may not, or meals may be provided to guests, but no sale of meals to the public. No cooking facilities we permitted in guest rooms. No receptions meeting parties are allowed, and then one sign. Since that time, there's been some, I guess, issue, confusion on the one condition, which is no receptions meetings, parties are allowed. The intent of that was not to have it rented out for anything other than a bed and breakfast. So they couldn't have somebody that wanted to have a wedding reception or a large anniversary party or that. It was not intended for civic or kind of community events. Like, one of the things that they had there was the distinctive home tours. They've had a chamber coffee and that. So staff would suggest that we amend that condition. I have some proposed language in that. So there's obviously clarity to that and understanding of that. There was some public that were at the planning commission meeting that had questions about that. I think some of those have already been talking with the owner and have some of the issues, I think, have been taken care of. The owner is here, so if you have questions specific to that, he can answer. But my suggestion would be it amend that to say, "The property shall not be rented for any receptions, meetings, or parties with the exception of non-revenue activities such as civic events and nonprofit group meetings, which are not to exceed two occurrences per month." The property shall not be rented for any receptions, meetings, or parties with the exception of non-revenue activities such as civic events and nonprofit group meetings, which are not to exceed two occurrences per month. So basically, if they wanted to have a chamber coffee and then maybe something else that they could have a couple of those a month.
Why would we care if they generated revenue?
It was to try to keep a, if you want to say, happy medium between the residents not wanting too much traffic and activity in there and keeping it more in line with the bed and breakfast, but also understanding that it is a unique property that has value to our community in that. So offer, again, to have chamber events or those. So that's primarily why. So we, there isn't an instance down the road where they may decide, you know, we're going to rent it out for weddings and that, to keep more in character with the neighborhood.
So does this take care of the parking problem too? I mean, like, are we going to have parking problems out there?
Well, yeah, I mean, for the average business in that, or daily business, there's parking on site that'll take place. There are going to be probably times against, again, the distinctive home tour of those where people are parking on the street because we're obviously going to have, you know, a number of people stopping and coming and that, which occurs in other parts of the community as well with the home tours and that. But on a regular basis for their Airbnb, no, there won't be a parking problem where they're going to have to park on the street.
It's a fair question. I went yesterday, though, and they actually have, I didn't know this. They have, they have parking on the inside of their actual bed and breakfast. I didn't know that.
Yeah, yes.
You can, like, I don't know how many spaces, seven or something?
Yeah, they could put more if they wanted, but they have basically enough to meet the code requirement for the rooms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it clearly is a spectacular structure and has been renovated wonderfully.
Yes.
And I certainly would hate to lose it as an opportunity for, like, the distinctive home tours, things that are civic focused. I understand the concern for parking, but, boy, it clearly is an asset in my mind for the community.
Yeah, and that, and, you know, speaking, I guess, for the owner, that's why it's also taken so long for them to get open, is, as you indicated, they have done substantial upgrades and, you know, renovation to that property as well as the home in that. And it's like night and day compared to what, when they started to what they have now.
And there is local management.
Yes, in fact, they're here as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dan, how did you arrive at two events per month? What was the rationale behind that?
It was more on just, I guess, you know, I guess, common sense type of thing where, you know, it would be something that would fit in line with what the owner is looking for and probably take care of everybody's needs. And the same thing, not be too cumbersome on the neighborhood, that type of thing. Because you figure, you know, maybe again, a couple, you know, Wednesdays out of the month and that. And so that's kind of how I came to it. Obviously, if the council feels it should be less or more or whatever, that's, you know, obviously at your discretion, and the owner's here to discuss any of that. But it seemed like a happy medium.
I'd like to hear from the owner. Are there people against it here?
There were. Like I said, there were, like, three property owners. I know, and again, the owner can speak to it. One of the property owners, they talked right after the planning commission meeting in that. And I think they resolved a lot of the issues. It seemed that it was just kind of a communication issue. And I think now the owners, as well as the management, is communicating with the neighbors. And so they're at a much better stage, if you want to say, with the whole issue.
Was their main concern just parking?
Yeah, it was a lot of the parking and the traffic that was coming in that. And again, it was only on those certain events. It wasn't a weekly occurrence or, you know, obviously a daily occurrence. Staff had gone out there a couple times. Of course, we came after the fact. So, you know, I did speak with the owner a few times during this process to understand what was going on. And each time, it was more of a civic event or, you know, that. It wasn't where they were renting for, you know, again, receptions, weddings, you know, things like that.
That, that is one concern that I have, obviously, is the traffic and the parking. And I know we've talked a lot about, you and I have talked about that. And I know Mr. Martindale's, has talked to me about that as well. So that's why I was asking about the two events per month. I know Mr. Martindale had mentioned maybe twelve a year or something like that. But two a month, I just have a concern that, like, with parking and traffic, that may become a nuisance to the neighbors, to the point that they would become frustrated. And that would kind of, because obviously, this is a beautiful home, and we want the community to love it and enjoy it, and we don't want that to become a negative thing. So that is
How do we mandate that on a homeowner? I don't agree with that whatsoever.
I think they should be able to do what they want to do. And I understand protecting the property and the home. But, I mean, to not even be able to have a wedding reception there, I think, is, I don't agree with it. But I don't know what the homeowner thinks. That's why I'd like to talk, I'd like to hear from them.
Do you have any more questions from here, right now?
Not at present time.
Okay.
Stay close.
Yep, Mr. Martindale?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the comments you've made. As far as the event
Identify yourself, sir.
I'm sorry, I apologize. My name is Jim Martindale, and I'm the owner of 201 North 13th Street. We've called it the Judge's Chambers. And bottom line is, and I'm not being pontificating at all, but the reality is, I don't believe that we're the owners. That place has so much history. The name is my, the deeds is my name. But it's the City of Guthrie's, and it's got so much history. And we're so excited about it. We, my wife got involved and spent way more money than I have to get it to be exactly what it was back in 1902. And that's the reason we're opening up two civic events. We've had the Eighty-Niners, the home tour. We're even asking, and I appreciate that, the two per month, kind of, I go, oh, the Girl Scouts want to come in. Also, the book club has come, the garden club. They're very small events, but I kind of would hate to go under a two per month just because it's like, well, we've got two, sorry, Girl Scouts, you can't come. But that's really what we want to do. And we're doing this, they actually cost us money to have host people because we do not, have not charged any civic activities. And that's really why we ask for the additional two rooms is because we're mostly, it's, you can hear crickets. However, for the OSU, sorry, I did want to say OU. OSU games, the flats, the, you know, the lazy E. We'd like to expand that so that we can accommodate those people. And that helps with our, hopefully, cash flow. It costs a lot of money to run that place. And so we just want those extra rooms so that we could do it. And if we can't, if you see fit that we don't hamstring ourselves there, we are not. I'm not going to come back here and say, we want to rent it out to XYZ. We realize it is a residential community, but we also realize the historic significance. And we certainly don't want to close it down to the city and civic events and the Girl Scouts because, you know, we're hamstrung that way, so.
Don't I get the historic significance? But, and I'll ask a question to Dan while you're still up there. Are we hamstringing, so to speak, other bed and breakfast owners from having events of any sort? Then why are we doing it on this one?
Again, it goes back to some of the concern from the adjoining neighbors and that. But again, obviously, if the council sees fit that that is something that they don't want to require, that's not required of others, you know, it's at your discretion to make that whole condition go away.
Well, I think that, is there anybody in the room opposing this amendment? I think that kind of speaks to the issue. I think that kind of speaks that the neighborhood, the dialogue that apparently has been held between the owner, maybe Dan, some of you, the management team that's on site. I think that speaks to, they have come to a reasonable, well, certainly dialogue and some reasonable idea that is a compromise. And I think that says it all. Well, it does. But again, on the parking side of it, are, is the street parking public?
Yes. Yeah, because they, again, they do have the required parking for their Airbnb, their B and B onsite, yeah, onsite. Obviously, just like any place else in the city, people can park on the street. And when they do have civic events, it's going to park, you know, they're going to have to park on the street because the property can't accommodate, you know, all the cars. But again, it's not a daily, weekly occurrence. It's just, again, on certain times and that, but it is public parking.
And I'm not trying to hold up the meeting here or anything. But I'm just coming into this and just now reading, I read it this weekend, obviously, but this is the first time I've had an opportunity to discuss it. What was your original proposal to planning before the negotiation side of it?
Well, to be honest with you, I kind of came hat in hand, and whatever you said, I would take. Because, and now, so if you said, you know, five or what have you. But now that we've, we've expanded it and things like that, we never did plan on that, having receptions, that sort of thing. But we didn't realize how many civic events we would have, and it's been very well received. And quite frankly, and thank you, I would love there not to be a restriction on that because we are not going to be charging for those types of events. And typically, we are, I think the garden club was, the book club was, you know, less than twenty, and the Girl Scouts would be less. So it really shouldn't impact it except for the Eighty-Niners, except for the home tour, except, you know, the Christmas. So, you know, again, this, to be honest, it costs us money to have civic events because we can't rent the rooms. But we're doing that because we want to be community minded, so, but truly.
I haven't been inside, but I've been by it. I mean, I can't imagine how you recoup the money on a bed and breakfast side of it.
No, we won't, we won't.
And so I'm in business as well, and there's no way I would invest if I weren't going to be able to recoup it.
Well, my, and this is a true statement, my CPA said, "You're an idiot." And because there's no way the amount of money that we have spent at our property will ever recoup it. But if we can have the additional seven at least during the times that it is, that the demand exceeds the rooms, that would be awesome.
Well, I go back to, and I know you're not asking for it, but I have a major question about the whole reception thing.
I like this guy, by the way.
Well, I don't even know, and him and I have never even met. But if you can, if you're not restricting anybody else from having a reception, Stone Lion, can you have a reception there? Okay, so he can have one at his, but he can't have one at his. His house is pretty historically significant, okay, but it's not restricted.
And it's about the same size property.
So why are we restricting this at all?
Well, again, it really came out of the first hearing where there was issues with the neighbors and, you know, having traffic and vehicles.
They're almost on a dead end.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, they're pretty close. The one that I would think would opposing it would be the Thomases, and they're not.
Can I ask a question real quick? So Dan, was notice given, notice wasn't given to this hearing. Notice was given to the planning commission, everybody in the three hundred feet got noticed at that time, right? Notice wasn't given tonight. This is just here for an amendment.
Right, because the hearing takes place at the planning commission level in that, obviously, they can show up at this meeting if they choose to. But again, there was like three of them, and as far as I know, all of them had had communication with the owner. So that's likely why they haven't shown up.
And did you receive any written?
Initially, yes, for the planning commission. And that was one of the owners directly to the north that has talked with the owner. And they were the ones that were talking to him right after the planning commission meeting.
But for council, you've not.
No, no, no.
And we're not restricting anybody else out there?
No, and like I said, you know, again, from Stassa, and either any of that works. You know, again, if you feel that that's being too restrictive, then I would suggest you eliminate the condition.
Well, I would say that if you've had conversation with the owner and the owner is accepting that as a, as a minimum, that, or maximum of two per month, that there isn't a unusual restriction as far as the owner's concerned.
But Brian, you're saying you don't think there should be any restrictions at all?
I don't think there ought to be. There's not a restriction on yours. There's not one on, there's not one on grants. There's not one on any of the other bed and breakfasts, but yet we're putting one on this one. It just, it's not fair.
Grants are the Stone Lions in residential.
Exactly. And it's, I'm a believer, if you do for one, you have to do for the other. You can't just tie somebody's hands and not tie the others. You can't do it. So you either got to do it for all, or you got to do it for none. And, you know, I understand it's historically significant. But if they haven't, they didn't jump up and restore this property, who knows what would have happened with it?
I don't think you can, you can't, you can't go up. I'm like, I don't think you can go beyond what the, what the published item on the agenda is.
Can't amend it right now.
I think, no, I would have to go for another I'd bring it back, is what I would do. That's what I would do. We have a different conversation here. Well, we have a motion and a second.
No, I don't believe this.
We don't have a second.
Then there's not an emotion made or a second.
You're right, you're right. Correct myself.
I mean, I'll make a motion to pass this, and then we can come back and change the, or can we not amend it?
So you're going to make an motion to table it?
No, because of the notice requirement, you can't do that.
You can table it.
You can, well, there's two issues we're dealing with here. One is going from five to seven bedrooms. That's before the council's tonight, that can be addressed. I believe if he wants to address the amendments to the original, what was passed by this body, that should go back to planning commission, notice should be given again, that conversation should happen over.
Okay.
Staff would concur. City manager would concur.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I do have an opinion. I'd like to voice, on the way over here, it's easy to notice the people, the house to the north that you spoke of has two, they have two fifty pickups and a trailer sitting in front of it every day on the street, every day. Because the driveway is full of trailers and stuff. There's no parking in their own driveway. The house directly across the street to the east had three cars in the driveway and two in the street. So directly across the street, directly to the north, cars, four in the street because there's no parking elsewhere. I don't, to get my jest, I don't see what they have anything to say about your parking. I watched the planning commission meeting. You said you have fifteen spaces. I take your word, that's more than enough for seven rooms? But further than that, I grew up on West Cleveland. As an adolescent for many years, and as an adult, I lived a half a block from that house. I remember the elderly lady that lived there with a handicapped daughter. And I often thought, I hoped that somebody would come along someday and take that property because it's a magnificent piece of property, magnificent home. And it's been on the historic register, I don't know as far as I can remember. So I thank you for taking that initiative and, no doubt, a lot of money, no doubt. So you've saved a gem, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, you can put five cars on the east side of it, and then five on the south, and you're still only in front of your property, in front of your house.
But back to what Brian said earlier. But back to what Brian said earlier, street parking is public parking. Right. So I, I take, you know, I listened, I listened to the people speak at the commission. I, I understand what they're saying, but, um, that house was there long before anybody else was there. And it is a gem and we need to keep it that way. And people come expecting to see that.
And you need to recoup your money.
Okay. We, we have, would you?
I'll second that motion.
Yeah. I make a motion to pass this.
Okay.
Item number five. Yeah. Which will allow from five to seven with the previous.
So we're only speaking about the increase from five units to seven units. We're not speaking of the language at all.
Right.
We're speaking of the number of units and that has been seconded.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
I did want to just say thank you to Mr. Martinio and your wife for all that you guys have poured into that property. I know you've done a lot of work and you've invested so much and it's beautiful. So thank you for your work on that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'm abstaining on that though.
Okay.
For, we have unanimous for those that, uh, that can vote with one abstention, uh, for the approval, uh, to amend the special use permit moving from five units to seven units on that, uh, property at, uh, 201 North 13th Street. Uh, item number six, acceptance of Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management grant, uh, award. Attorney Anthony Gibbs, are you presenting this?
Yes, sir.
All right. Tell us.
Right. So we've got a, what you have before you is a, a matching grant 50% for about 928,000. City's part would be 464,000 and some change for a multi-jurisdictional, multidisciplinary training center. Ultimately, the location of that has not been decided yet. It's still being discussed by Chief Lawson, Chief Swager and City Manager. However, uh, what that would do for us is create a place for us to be able to hold some even better training. When, when I see that, um, it, it means that we can make our agency safer. Um, if we have better, uh, locations, better, um, you know, more, we were talking about parking a second ago as well, but even equipment, AV equipment. And right now we're hurting for that a bit because, um, we just don't have that large structure to be able to do it. Part of this grant, you're like, well, okay, we, we have city hall. We have, the fire department has a, has a training room. The, the Logan County has a training room. That's actually listed down on here. Um, what we're actually discussing as well is a place that's big enough to actually put, um, some defensive tactics training mats. Um, so you could actually host, say 30 to 50 students at any given time. That creates quite a bit of space. It's very specific as far as its needs for heating and cooling, et cetera. Um, along with that though, this gives us a secondary capability why is, which is why the Department of Emergency Management was into this as well, but it creates an off-site dispatch center for us should city hall ever become compromised. And we're not just talking about, you know, uh, you know, an event happens out front where we need to relocate, but if we power outages, et cetera, we can actually relocate, um, communication center to an off-site location and continue to provide services to the city. Um, there's one other thing. It's not just, uh, safety for public, um, for employees that service the public, but, um, from what I understand, this would also potentially give us a, a raise in our ISO certification that, that could drop, um, property taxes, if I'm correct, and, um, in having this type of training facility. So it could mean a, a bit of a, uh, valuing of that tax for the.
Sergeant Gibbs, it's insurance.
Insurance.
Insurance. I apologize.
We need that.
Yeah. And so at any rate, I, with that said, I'm sure there are questions. If, if there are any, I'll, I'll try to answer those the best that I can. And by the way, um, Chief Swager sends his apologies for just not being able to be here tonight and, which is why I'm standing in front of you, not running for city council. Just want to put that out there, by the way. Not related to anybody who is, so.
Let me answer some questions I had when you said 30 to 50. So I'm in visualizing something, a large area for 30 to 50 people doing hand-to-hand combat or that type of training.
Yes. So, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I, I mean, that answers a lot of my questions. If Chief Swager were here, I would ask him, I mean, what's AVA? What, is that what you said? AVA equipment or something? Store, to store?
Defensive tactics, equipment. Uh, I'm not sure. Oh, AV, audio video equipment.
Okay.
So the, the equipment that goes along with just the training aids.
So if you set that equipment up plus the equipment necessary for dispatching, that's, that's pretty expensive. Is that all, you think that can be all inclusive in a, in a building? Facility that'll do 30 to 50 and all, everything above?
That, that was of course budgeted for, um, and some of those things can actually be cross-purposed. Large monitors, uh, et cetera. Those things can be used in both, both ways.
But they're going to be in place there. So if you have to make a move, they're going to be there.
Correct.
I guess I would ask him, this is a big part of their, the police department's budget to match this. Big part. So there's always needs there. I, I guess this has been thought out that there may be sacrifices necessary. Cause you're, right now, you don't know, hear so much in the beginning, beginning, beginning stages. You don't know architecture or what the cost will be until you're faced with it. So, um, it's 315,000 this year right away and then 170 some thousand next year?
100.
Yes. Mary Council, so the first year, uh, this first year, 315,000 would come out of the existing budget.
And that's already budgeted.
That's already budgeted. Now, I will say, it was not budgeted for this purpose.
Right.
It's, it's using funds within the police department's budget to allocate to this grant application. So this grant from ODM will span over three of our fiscal years because of the timeframe in which it takes place. What we have agreed, and if you'll read the last paragraph of Chief Swager's staff report, and, and I'll read you the last sentence, anything above the money allocated this fiscal year would only be spent within the next two fiscal years and only if budgeted and approved by the city council. We've come up with 315,000. The match for that would make it 630,000. Anything over that is subject to your future approval and our availability of funds. And Chief Swager and the police department understand that we'll do what we can to get there. We intend to get there, but we can make no promises. We, we typically won't make any revenue projections until we hit six-month point in the year. We're not there. We will be soon, uh, but we will have an idea for next year after we get to that point. One of the things we talked about when we looked at what it would take for the next fiscal year to match this going forward. If it's 175,000, which is what's remaining, that doesn't include if the fire department is going to join in on this. We've got some funds from a previous, uh, project that were never expended, that the fire department was intending to do a training facility of its own for. So we could potentially apply that to this project.
Be a joint training facility.
Correct. And that's not included in what you have before you tonight. So that's something we've been working together on. Uh, I won't pin Chief Lawson down on that yet because it is still something we're in, in conversations on. Uh, but very, I want to be very clear that the total grant award is nine to 928,418 and 20 cents. Right now we're anticipating a $630,000 grant. And if the future funds allow, we will get to that full 928,000. If not, we would then come back to you and say, okay, we need to amend this grant, send whatever's remaining back to ODM or just not draw it down because we don't have the matching funds to get completely there. Is that clear as mud?
So, so we're, we're, we're requesting the maximum amount, the 900,000 plus.
Yep.
Uh, even though right at the present time, our funding level would allow us to only go to 600,000 plus.
Yep. So at this point, that is, that is where we are today. I will say, uh, with our grant award being at the 928,000 dollar level, with the potential for two additional fiscal years, we didn't want to cut that off and say, okay, it's going to cost us another 175,000 to get another 300,000. Why would we, why would we cut that off before we get to that budget year and knowing what those allocations are going to be? Now, I believe the chief and his team understand that, hey, you know, we've, we've put a plan in place for vehicle replacement. One Tahoe costs $75,000 a year. Okay. So that's the cost of the purchase plus the outfit. Maybe next year, that's not an option. Um, and I'm just, I'm throwing that out there. I'm not pinning that down at this moment, but just letting you know, we've already had those conversations of those capital purchases that we could put on hold at a minimum for a year to invest into this larger project.
And I may have missed this, but where, where would we put this new facility?
We've got several different locations. We've identified as good sites for it.
That we own, right?
Yes. So ideally we would build this out by the firing range, the gun range. Um, however, the infrastructure out at that site is lacking. The roads to get there, um, once you get off of, um, off into our property, they're behind the convenience center.
Good spot though.
Yeah. And, and also the water infrastructure there is not sufficient. So we want to make sure that whatever we do, it makes sense. One, as Sergeant Gibbs mentioned, for the ISO rating. So the location needs to make sense for that. Um, and it also needs to make sense for the folks who are going to be utilizing the training facility. And we don't want it to be so far out of the way, out of sight, out of mind. Really needs to be closer to town. Um, is for many reasons, but primarily the ones we've just discussed. One thing I do want Sergeant Gibbs to touch on, uh, let's talk about the armory and why the armory wouldn't necessarily be sufficient today in its current capacity. Because when Chief Swager came in with this grant opportunities, the first thing I said was, well, let's, let's remodel the armory. Let's try to make that work instead of building something separate. Um, Sergeant Gibbs has put a lot of himself, has put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into laying tile and, and making that facility work. So can you talk to the council about that a little bit, please?
Yes, sir. So that, and forgive the, the statement, but it's, it, it reminds me of sort of putting lipstick on the pig kind of thing. Um, it's, it's got quite a few problems that could be remedied, but we wasting a lot of money in doing that. One of the biggest though, is that the interior structural walls are actually made out of the same thing that you look at the outside. So when you see that sandstone, um, they're, they were laid in there. Um, and because of that, moving those just to, just as they take the bathrooms and make them, um, ADA compliant, just that in and of itself is going to be a huge ordeal. Um, we, we actually had to measure all that with this last one, he given you a plan a couple of years ago on just, on just kind of updating the small classroom it has there. And it just became cost prohibitive, um, at that point. And not only that, but the plumbing, the, um, as far as, uh, as far as rust and, and just many other things. It's great for what it is as far as storage. Um, it is, it's a godsend for, for equipment that, that would have some freeze damage. So the heaters work and it does a great job for us for, for what it is. But when we're looking at a training facility, it just becomes, um, in, in my opinion, cost prohibitive in order to make that into what we are wanting it to be.
Don't we still have that blue house out there by the airport?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And we, we did explore that. Um, if you'll recall, the reason we purchased that property was for the runway protection zone at the airport. So we cannot build any structures there, but that is something.
There's a structure there already though, right? The house.
Yep.
It's not big enough.
No, I know that.
While I had, had hoped for a 10-minute meeting, I can see that that has been dashed. So I guess I'll ask my question. Um, why, why aren't we just, rather, and since we're building a new fire station, why isn't this part of that?
That was going to be my next question.
I mean, why, why not include it in that? It seems to be that, once again, that would be the parsimonious course of action.
And could we use this grant in that?
We couldn't use the grant for the construction of the fire station.
No, but as an extension of it.
We, we have explored, we had our kickoff meeting this week on the construction of the second fire station. Um, once we know really what that site is going to look like, there's some pretty drastic elevation difference on the property. So drainage is a concern. Until we know what that looks like, I'm, I'm not comfortable committing that at this point, but it is something that we would like to consider. Um, if we can, anytime we can, you know, eliminate a redundancy, that's something we want to do and that would be a good spot. So that is something we've talked about.
And this grant would cover the equipment that would be necessary, backup equipment for the, um, communication center?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Submit your votes.
I'll just run.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to accept the Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management Grant, uh, award application for, uh, a multidisciplinary training site and off-center, off-site communication center. Um, item number seven, city manager report.
Yes. Mary Council, want to thank everybody for being flexible with this meeting. Uh, the weather last week closed us down for a day and a half. Uh, want to thank the Public Works Department, Police and Fire. They worked around the clock, really did a great job. Our streets department, those guys were out overnight and again, worked around the clock for three, four days on end. And so they did a good job. They kept us safe. They kept the roads cleared and we are extremely grateful for them. Uh, would also like to, on the subject of the winter weather, I'd like to applaud Mary Leck, Adam Robb and his team of volunteers. Got the winter weather warming station set up with a partnership with Generations Church. So I know that was utilized by several folks. Um, at one point we even had, I believe Sergeant Gibbs was over there, uh, for a little bit of time. So notice that we had a good attendance at the warming station. That was well received. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
A quick update on CIP number two, growing Guthrie update. I did send out an email to both the city council and the oversight committee approximately two weeks ago. If you haven't noticed, uh, the water tower on the east side keeps playing hide and go seek. Um, so the curtain comes up, curtain goes down, curtain up, curtain down. Um, the weather has kind of slowed that project down a little bit. But they are moving forward with the sandblasting and making the repairs, uh, that were approved by the city council at their last meeting. So I previously mentioned, the second fire and EMS station kickoff meeting was held on Monday. And last Friday, we had a meeting regarding the Highland Park pool. So I think we're close to having a presentation to the parks board and the city council with a design and a budget on the pool relatively soon. I'm shooting for your second meeting in March. Don't hold me to that. Might be the first meeting in April. Uh, but should have you something in concrete to see relatively soon on that project. New thing this year that we've been working on since last year is a partnership between the city of Guthrie and the Guthrie Chamber is Guthrie at the Capitol Day. So Brittany and I were at the Capitol last year. Several of us, several of us were there for 89ers and we had noticed that several municipalities across the state have their own day at the Capitol. So it's only fitting that Guthrie has its day at the Capitol. I was shocked to learn we hadn't had that in the past. So that is scheduled for Thursday, April 10th. Uh, we will have more information coming out to you soon as we nail down the logistics of what that truly looks like. Um, on a surface level, vendors from the community as well as restaurants and promotional items at the Capitol, sharing with everybody. I will, uh, thank Senator Hall, Representative Doolph Fifer, uh, their respective assistants and Councilwoman Mills for their work on getting this done. So look forward to that. We will have our next city council meeting. I know we've thrown you off with the special, special meeting tonight. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday. Uh, crazy to believe that it'll be March 4th. So look forward to seeing you then. Thank you guys for hanging in there.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Uh, item number eight, comments from city council. Vice Mayor Gary.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to also echo what the city manager said about, uh, Mary Leck Drop's efforts to ensure that those that are most vulnerable have a place to get out of the weather. I think that is highly commendable. Um, I understand that Your Honor is, is from Minnesota. Thank you for sending your weather back to Minnesota.
I have been blamed for that many times over the last week.
And with that, I yield back.
Okay. Councilman Williams.
Uh, no, no, sir.
Okay. Councilman Robb.
Uh, thank you. Appreciate that gratitude. Um, I would, I will say I was one cog in a wheel of six other. I will say I was one cog in a wheel of six other cogs. There's a bunch of people that started out doing that, we ended up having about 15 or so volunteers by the time it was over, so it really was something great to see. Also, City of Guthrie came in in the fourth quarter and helped us out a little bit, so I appreciate that from you guys as well. Thank you, Eddie, for doing that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Mills.
No comments this evening, thank you.
Councilman Buthry.
I echo everybody else with Adam, you and the whole group is appreciated, and thank goodness the warm weather appears to be here. And that's it for me.
Do I get any credit for that?
No credit. But it was nice today.
I would give credit to the pastor on that one. Councilman Taylor.
Real quick, did you get your golf game in yesterday?
I did.
Okay, just want to check. It's great to have the weather back. It was, what, I think 74, 75 yesterday, and today it was like 80 or 81, so I think spring or summer, whatever you want to call it, too. But staff, yeah, well, hopefully not. Thank you, staff. Dan did good on that, on all that stuff, I appreciate that. It was good to have that, so, and, but yeah, be kind of paying attention, I think we'll have storms coming in this next week, so be ready for hail and lightning and wind and anything else. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, also add, again, thanks to the, to the street crew, crews, police. When we have these unfortunate climate changes, it does impact, and they did, the street crew and the police have done, did a great job, as they always do. Sometimes you forget about that when things are moving smoothly and we have perfect weather, which is most of the time here in Guthrie, America. But at the few times that we have some inclement weather, especially snow and ice, the street crew, police do a fabulous, fabulous job. Also would like to recognize the Teacher of the Year. I had that recognition yesterday. Guthrie Public Schools recognized Teacher of the Year, Shannon Buell.
Brewrell.
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 And she's a seventh grade mathematics teacher, and so an area that I know is one of Jeff's favorite topics.
No.
But, but anyway, during the, during the course of the recognition, there was recognition of many other teachers, and I think, number one, a room full of citizens of Guthrie, at Meridian, and the visuals of recognitions from colleagues, as well as from students, makes one realize how fortunate that we are to have such a solid group of teachers taking care of our kids. Really, from the leadership from Dr. Simpson down to the janitors that work in these facilities are all there, and the true winners, I mean, we have, we have, we have a Teacher of the Year, but the true winners are our kids. True winners are our kids. So, thanks for, to the teachers, congratulations to the winners, but thanks to the teachers and to the staff at the Guthrie Public Schools, make it all happen. That being the last item on our agenda, we are adjourned from City Council. I open up our Public Works Authority meeting, again, originally scheduled for February 18th, the Public Works Authority meeting of February 25th. Second item on the agenda is Consent Agenda Item A, which is the approval of the Public Works Minutes Meeting of February 4th.
I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll let's run.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of Consent Agenda Item A. Item three, item removal from the Consent Agenda, there were none. Item number four, Resolution Number 2025, Logan County Water and Sewer and Solid Waste Management Increase for District Number One.
So, so this is the annual CPI increase for rural water, so we're just increasing from 664 per thousand to 683 per thousand?
And this is just our standard increase predicated upon the Consumer Price Index?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Resolution 2025-1, Logan County Rural Water Sewer and Waste Water Management District Rate Increase.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please.
I'll let's run.
See the votes. Unanimous approval for Resolution Number 2025-1, increasing rural water, Logan Rural Water Sewer and Solid Waste Management for District One. That being the last item on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.